Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our City Council meeting of April 21st, 2021. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask our clerk to read the rule, please.
Vice Mayor Haddaschelts. Councilmember Albert. Councilmember Madonza. Mayor Bernusconi.
Here, thank you. I'd like to ask Councilmember Albert if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
You bet. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sonia, can you please announce the meeting procedures?
Good evening. As a response to mitigating the spread of COVID-19, the meeting of the City Council will allow members of the public to participate and address the City Council during the meeting. Public comment will be taken by the limited number of participants attending the meeting and may also be submitted by telephone by calling 916-774-5353. If you call, you may be placed on a brief hold until the attendant can answer. The broadcast is delayed for up to 30 seconds when watching at home. When your call is transferred to the City Council, you will have five minutes in which to speak to regular agenda items and three minutes for public comment on items not on the agenda. I will monitor your time and let you know when your time has expired. When calling, please do not use the speakerphone option, as it may create difficulty for the City Council to hear you, and make sure that the volume is turned down on your television to ensure that there's no interference. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you. And we have one presentation tonight, and it is our city response to COVID-19 from our city manager, Tom Casey.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Dominic Casey, your city manager, pleased to be here this evening to give an update, a brief update on the COVID-19 situation here currently in Placer County. Not a whole lot has changed since the last update. There have been several announcements that are forecasting changes coming, but I thought it'd still be timely to provide that update this evening because we are receiving some questions around those announcements. So Placer County is still in Tier Two, which is red, which is substantial. Cases have risen lately. As you see, it's 9.6, and that was as of April 19th. But I was able to look actually on my way down here, and I did see that it's actually at 10.1 per 100,000 today. And so, as you can see, it does change. It does fluctuate up and down a little bit from day to day. But that's really still only being reported one day a week on Tuesday from the state. But I should mention, too, vaccination efforts, which I'll share on the next page, have been significant and successful throughout Placer County. We remain to be one of the best per capita in the state. As you know, the governor announced that the tier system will be eliminated coming this June 15th. We'll fully reopen if these two criteria here on the screen are met. The first is that there's enough vaccine supply for Californians that are 16 years and older to be vaccinated, and then hospitalization rates will remain stable and low, especially among the vaccinated Californians. There will still be health measures in place, including wearing masks will continue, and testing and vaccination requirements will remain for some businesses and industries. And this is really candidly one of the challenges right now. There's not a lot of information about what's going to be changing from the guidelines or Cal-OSHA, which makes it a little challenging to plan and forecast for what we're going to see in the environment post-June 15th. But we are planning right now, if all above measures are met and the Cal-OSHA requirements aren't too prohibitive, that all city staff will return to the office on Monday, June 14th. And I should qualify that. Many of our staff are back today. Our facilities are open. City Hall is open. What this will really mean is you'll see a more robust facility opening of our MyDoo Center and our Mahaney Center and some of the facilities that right now that folks enjoy renting and using that they're not able to do today based on the guidelines. And so, we'll see a lot of those come back. On the vaccine update, Placer County is currently conducting vaccine clinics for those who work and live in Placer County who are 16 and older. You will need proof of age and proof of living or working in Placer County. That will be required at the sites. And as I mentioned earlier on the previous slide, we have 267,000 total doses have been administered, and 113,000 of those were the second doses. And so, we're over 100,000 now completely vaccinated and a county population of just under 400,000. And if you're interested, there's a lot more information on vaccines. It could have filled probably 14 slides at plaster.ca.gov/vaccine and clinics. And on April 13th, the CDC and FDA did recommend a pause in the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine because of small number of cases of a rare severe type of blood clot that's been reported. And so, I mentioned that because there were a lot of folks that did want the Johnson &amp; Johnson because it was the one-shot dose. But right now, it has been paused, and so there's still Madera and the Pfizer vaccines available at our vaccine clinics. Our next slide is a little bit about city programs because this has really been the impetus of a lot of questions this last week about what's coming and what do the holidays look like, the summer look like. And so, as I mentioned, we anticipate increasing capacity in all of our summer recreation programs and facilities, being fully open and accessible by the time summer comes around and they're needed. Some of the events right now, we have at Mahaney Park, the Diners to Go. It's the second and fourth Thursday of the month. Our Farmer's Market at Mahaney Park from Sundays to 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and that'll be beginning May 2nd. And all of these are within the guidelines, and guidelines will be followed. Our Mayor's Cup is coming up on Friday, May 7th. And then, we'll also have Friday Flicks, the third Friday of the month. Reservations are required in May to make sure we have the appropriate amount of space and we can plan for the amount of folks that are coming. Being that it's outdoors, it does make it a lot easier to do that. Food Truck Mania on the third Thursday of the month, beginning in June. And we will have our concerts in the square resuming the third Saturdays, beginning in June. And this is probably the biggest one that we've received the most questions about is the Fourth of July Parade and Festivities. So, we are planning the parade and festivities in Royal Park, and we are planning a joint fireworks show with Placer Valley Tourism and Placer County and the city at the grounds on the Fourth of July. So, those are all currently being planned. And given that we meet the requirements on June 15th and we're able to move forward, we'll be positioned well to move these programs forward in a safe and effective way. And so, with that, I'd be happy to turn it back over to the council and answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the council?
Thank you, Tom.
If there are none, I will open up for public comment. And those who would like to comment on this item can call into 916-774-5353. This could be a first.
Wow.
Okay, because of the delay, I'll just give it a couple more seconds. Okay, I will close public comment. This item is for information only, and so, we will not be taking any action on this item. We'll move in now to public comments. This is now a time for anyone to call in for any items that are not on the agenda, to comment on them. The number is 916-774-5353. So first, is there anyone here this evening that would like to make a comment on the any item that's not on the agenda? Okay. And are there any calls this evening? My goodness. Okay, there does not appear to be any calls this evening, so I will close public comment. And Sonia, can you announce the procedures for approving the consent calendar?
All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine in nature and will be passed by one motion. There will be no discussion of consent calendar items unless a member of the City Council staff or the public requests a specific item be removed. At this time, the council or staff has identified any item to be removed. Mayor Bernusconi, if you'd give a few moments to see if there are any phone calls requesting that an item be removed for separate discussion and action.
Yes, we'll do. So now, we'll pause for just a moment in case we have another, anyone call in.
She's talking to somebody.
Okay, false alarm.
May I have a motion to approve the consent calendars recommended?
Second.
Vice Mayor Haddaschelts.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert. Councilmember Madonza.
Yes.
Mayor Bernusconi.
Thank you. Okay, that's in a consent calendar. We'll move into item 8.1, which is a council discretionary fund request. Gold Star Family Memorial for the Roseville Cemetery.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, the request for council discretionary funding this evening is from the Gold Star Families of Roseville Committee members in conjunction with the Woody Williams Foundation, requesting the City Council consider allocating $5,000 to install a monument in the Roseville Cemetery in honor of Gold Stars families and relatives who sacrificed a loved one while they were in the armed forces. And at this point, I think we have a presentation from some of the committee members.
Yes, if anyone would like to speak to this item, you can come forward. Please state your name.
Hello, Mayor Bernusconi and City Council members. It's nice to see you all tonight. For the record, my name is Jamie Hazen, and I have with me my husband, Mike Hazen, and Lee Morse in the audience. You may know that my son is active-duty Army. He currently serves at Fort Campbell, Kentucky. I'm a Blue Star mother. My friend, Lee Morse, is a Gold Star sister. Gold Star is a designation for a family member who has lost a loved one in an American war. Being a Blue Star mom is an honor for me. Becoming a Gold Star family member is a tragedy. Sadly, we have other Gold Star family members here in Roseville also. We are here before you tonight requesting City Council discretionary funds for the Gold Star Families Memorial Monument being built at the Roseville Cemetery. The monument will be a quiet place of reflection for those family members and community members to honor those who have served and made the highest sacrifice. The total project cost for the monument and benches is approximately $36,000. $21,000 has been raised so far, with an additional $15,000 more needed to fully fund the project. We started the fundraising efforts in November 2019, but fundraising was halted last year due to COVID. We have several corporate donations, but recently, we launched a campaign to unite service clubs to see if they would fundraise or share the campaign to entice their members to donate. Their members are our community members. We have received community donations from VFW Post 1492 with promised donations from the Roseville Moose Lodge, the Roseville Elks Lodge, and Reefs Across America. We would like to recognize the Roseville Cemetery Board for including the monument as part of their new administration building. The space will have a lovely water feature, and it's very tranquil. The Roseville Gold Star Families Memorial Committee is working under the direction of the Woody Williams Foundation in Louisville, Kentucky. To date, 79 monuments have been dedicated across the United States, with 80 more in planning and construction, including our monument here in Roseville. We're hoping to dedicate our monument in early October with representatives from the foundation planning to be in attendance. So, stay tuned for more on that, as we hope you'll all join us as well. Our group has been working with the graphic design team in the Public Affairs and Communications Department to help us create our special Homeland Panel that will pay tribute to Roseville and highlight some of our amenities we're known for. If you can, oh, it was just on the screen. There it is on the screen. The one in the bottom left is the Homeland Panel. You see, it's got the sculpture. It's got Tower Theater, Rose Train, and the city seal. So, we hope you like it. We think it represents Roseville very well. So, hopefully, I have expressed the value of this monument for our community, and we hope you will consider utilizing discretionary funds to help us meet our goal for this worthwhile project. Thank you so much for your time, and we're available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jamie. Does the council have any questions of Jamie?
I have a couple. How much have you raised to date?
To date, we've raised $21,000.
That's awesome. And then, the pictures that we just saw here, is that quartz or a granite wall? Or what kind of material is that?
It's granite.
It's granite, okay. So, on the off chance it was vandalized or whatever, that would be easily, I don't know if I want to say conditioned, but it wouldn't be difficult to repair if need be. Okay. And then, each one of these, does that make a square? So, there's four sides of this? Or what's the visual on this?
The visual, as you walk up, this is the backside of this.
So, you're walking in, this would be the backdrop of it?
Yes.
Reflection, there'd be benches and things in the front of this.
There will be benches around it, so the community can sit and reflect. And there will also be a water feature that has been donated by the Roseville Cemetery Board.
Awesome. And then, two more questions. Once you raise the money, what's the timeline to get this actually installed and ready for people to visit it?
We are hoping to have it installed in late September, early October. We're hoping to have a dedication ceremony in early October, and folks from the foundation in Kentucky will be coming out for that.
Awesome. I think this is an amazing project, and I can't think of a better reason to pay tribute to those people who have given the ultimate sacrifice. So, thank you for bringing this forward, and whoever the artist was that created this, I think it's an amazing piece, and I think it will look very well. It will look, excuse me, it will present well in the area that's going to be put in. So, thank you.
And thank you again to the Public Affairs and Communications Staff for designing the Homeland Panel that you'll see here.
Vice Mayor Haddaschelts or Councilmember Albert, any comments, questions?
Nope.
Okay, it was really beautiful. I will open this up now to public comment. If there was anyone that would like to either call in or address this item here tonight in our chambers, the phone number is 916-774-5353. I hear her talking with someone. Okay, sounds like we have one caller.
Good evening. If you'd state your name, you may make your comments now.
Thank you. This is Lisa Larkin, and as someone who has extended family members who have been lost in the military, serving in the military, as well as having other members of the family serving in the military, I think this is a wonderful tribute that should be helped along to make sure that it happens. But I also wanted to see if we could find out what the contact information would be if I wanted to spread the word on raising money for this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other calls? Okay. Jamie, would you like to answer that? It's a great question.
Thank you for calling in. We really appreciate your sentiments. We are doing a lot of our marketing via Facebook. We have a Facebook page, Roseville Gold Star Families Monument. If you will look that up, otherwise, you can contact me at JamieHazen.LiveLife@gmail.com. And thank you very much for calling in. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, I will close public comment. And unless the council has any other comments, questions, or you want to have a motion?
The proposed motion is to grant the Gold Star Families of Roseville Committee members in conjunction with the Woody Williams Foundation, $5,000 from the council discretionary funds. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Haddaschelts.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza.
Yes.
Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Thank you both, and actually, all three of you for being here this evening and bringing this forward. I can't think of a more kind of legendary tribute that we can honor these families by. So, happy to do what we can. Oh, my pleasure. And I know a team member from our Public Affairs is also a Navy veteran, too, Megan McPherson. Okay, so that wraps us up there. We will move on to item 9.1, Fiddament Ranch Community Facilities District Number Five Bond Issuance.
Good evening, Mayor Bernusconi, City Council members. I'm Dennis Kaufman, Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer. With this agenda item tonight, staffer recommending council approve a bond issue for the Fiddament Ranch Community Facilities District Number Five. This CFD was formed to establish a land-secured financing mechanism to fund acquisition and construction of authorized facilities and services. Recommended bond issue is the 2021 series with a not-to-exceed amount of $30 million. The proceeds will be used to acquire and construct public facilities, fund a debt service reserve, and pay the costs of issuing the bonds. Two prior series of bonds were issued for this CFD in 2017 and 2019, and the maximum debt for all the series of bonds for this CFD is $75 million. The authorized facilities in this CFD include transportation improvements such as North Hayden Parkway, Blue Oaks Boulevard, as well as utility improvements and parks improvements and open space improvements. This next slide shows the map of the CFD with Fiddament Road on the right-hand side, Blue Oaks Boulevard on the bottom left, and North Hayden Parkway curving through the district from the right-hand side down to the lower left. The staff recommendation tonight is to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for the City of Roseville Fiddament Ranch CFD Number Five, including the form of the preliminary official statement used to market the bonds and other related actions. Thank you. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions of Dennis? Okay. We'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone tonight that would like to comment on this item? Okay, see, now I'll close public comment. And if the council doesn't have any other comments or questions, we'll have a motion.
The motion is to adopt Resolution 21-153, authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for and on behalf of the City of Roseville, Fiddament Ranch Community Facilities District Number Five, approving and directing the execution of a supplemental agreement to fiscal agent agreement and bond purchase agreement, approving the form of preliminary official statement, approving sale of such bonds, and approving other related documents and actions. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Haddaschelts. Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza.
Yes.
Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes, thank you. We'll move on to item 9.2, City Council Finance Authority, the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act Loan Agreement.
Good evening, Mayor Bernusconi and members of the council. I'm Rich Plecker. I'm your EU Director, sorry, Environmental Utilities, for those that don't know what EU stands for. We had once planned a very lengthy and comprehensive presentation on this matter this evening, but since we've drug you through this for the last couple of years, we thought we'd maybe keep it a little shorter. This is a little bit about the highlights of the action that we're requesting this evening, and I'll review some of the main project elements that we're looking at accomplishing with this financing. Most of you have seen this graphic before. The WIFI loan proceeds are intended to finance roughly about half of the Roseville Water Future Initiative. Two legs of that stool, if you will, are the water component and the water reuse component. The total package is comprised of a number of linked actions, which increases our resiliency in this city. Along the water component, following from top to bottom, we're looking at installing additional aquifer storage and recovery wells, financing the six wells that we currently have on the books. We're looking at the WIFI proceeds to help us finance that in addition to developer contributions that are already in the bank. On the right-hand side, we're looking at two projects on the water reuse component. One is the first phase. It's a tertiary filter replacement project at the Pleasant Grove Wastewater Treatment Plant. Those filters right now are approaching end of life, and it's about time that we replace them. We're intending on replacing them with better, higher-performance, more efficient filters that do two things. One, it increases the plant capacity, but also sets us well up for advanced purification of tertiary water, which is Project Phase Two. That's an advanced project where we're looking at advanced treatment of wastewater and what are some of the possible uses that we can do with that wastewater, if it's possible. Lots of technology, lots of science involved in that second project there. So, those two elements combined really creates sort of this next-generation regional water supply that decreases our dependence on Folsom Dam and some of our other traditional surface water supplies that have become more and more constrained as time has gone on. Just to recall that the WIFI loan, basically, the way it works is it's administered through the Environmental Protection Agency. It's intended to finance 49% of a given project's total cost. The other 51% comes from local sources, that being the city. So, on the next slide, a little bit of a timeline on where we've been with this and where we're heading. 421, with your approval this evening, we'll approve the loan agreements. And I really want to stop here and thank our partners in both the City Attorney's Office and in the Finance Department who've helped us work through this loan agreement. As you might imagine, $33 million is a bit of paper in comparison to signing something like a mortgage agreement. So, both the attorneys and our finance professionals are experts in these matters, and they've really helped us out quite a bit. The folks in EU have been working on this for the last couple of years. We kind of expect them to do that. That's their thing. But both Dennis and Bob Shop didn't sign up for any of this, so we want to thank them. If all goes well, we intend to close the loan this Friday. That's with the EPA. The EPA Administrator, their designee, will sign the loan agreements on behalf of the EPA. We're expecting some national press coverage, local press coverage perhaps next week, given the pandemic and sort of where we're at with things. We're expecting to do some pretty novel approaches to how we do that, rather than having the gigantic press release and ribbon-cutting and the things of that nature. We're looking at doing something a little more virtual. With that said, once everything's all done, we have the next couple of years to sort of determine where we're going to develop our local match. We have a variety of options. One is, we can use our local cash reserves to do that. We can use some form of low-cost lending, like the SRF loan that we've done before, or we can do some other form of bond that's lower cost. We expect the WIFI loan to be preferential to other forms of borrowing right now on an interest rate basis, about a point less, give or take. We won't know that until Friday precisely. We'll say that about a year ago, it looked even more advantageous than it is now, but it's still significant savings. We expect over the term to save somewhere between $1 million and $5 million in total project costs over the term of doing this. I was joking earlier with Dennis and others that about once a generation, we need to do a loan like this to remind ourselves the difficulty and to reach that conclusion, which is that there's no such thing as free money. Cheap money, it might be cheap money, but there's an awful lot of work that goes into it, not just in getting it, but in also administering it downstream. So, with this accomplished, I think I will have done my job and taught the next generation that comes after me that there is no such thing as free. But nevertheless, it's a good thing to experience. It's a tremendous value to the customers of Roseville Utilities. So, with that, on the next page, you'll see our recommendation. The structure of it is quite convoluted and lengthy, not convoluted in the sense of not making sense, but there's a number of procedural things that have to happen. We're requesting that you adopt this resolution to approve the WIFI loan agreement. The resolution also deals with the supplemental installment purchase contract, trust agreements. And then, lastly, this authorizes the city manager to sign these loan agreements on your behalf and allows him to make non-substantive changes to the agreements. Any sort of lending agreements are, always seems to be some sort of change that has to happen at the end, and that approval or that authority will allow him, Dom, to make those changes as they need to happen to facilitate conclusion of this process. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Does the council have any questions of Rich? Councilmember Albert?
When you were talking about the future revenue we have to match with, you mentioned several items, but I just wanted to, we can do a mixture of those items, too, possibly using cash and a couple of loans, run some numbers of figures.
That's correct, sir. It's common, at least in our practice, where we will use whatever's most advantageous to the city at the time. In a number of occasions, we will conduct borrowings or In a number of occasions, we will conduct borrowings or authorized borrowings when we have cash on hand. And the reason that we do that is we're trying to look at minimizing the total cost of the project over its lifespan. So sometimes we can do that through a combination of loan proceeds, cash on hand, grants, loans, different things. So our ultimate objective is to get the best dollar value for our customers in the long term. And I will say, based on my 35 years of experience, we're in an enviable position that we can do that. We have the cash reserves on hand to be able to do that, and for the most part. So it places us in a very strong financial position. Other organizations that I've worked with and for in the past, we haven't had that luxury. We've had to do a borrowing to accomplish a large capital project. So it's, we've worked hard to gain this position, and now that we've gained it, we aim to keep it for years and years to come.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We'll open it up to public comment. Now it's time for anyone to call in on this item or come to the podium. The number to call in is 916-774-5353. Does not appear to be any phone calls at this time. I don't believe there's anyone tonight here who would like to comment on the item. Okay, I will close public comment.
The motion this evening is the city council acting as the Roseville Finance Authority to adopt Resolution Number 1-21, authorizing issuance and sale of a water revenue bond to finance improvements to the water utility system, authorizing entrance into and approving the form of a WIFI loan agreement, supplemental installment purchase contract and trust agreement, and documents related thereto, and authorizing the taking of certain actions in connection therewith. And the city council adopt Resolution Number 21-140, authorizing entrance into and approving the form of a WIFI loan agreement and a supplemental installment purchase contract to finance improvements to the city's water utility system and authorizing the taking of actions in connection therewith. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Haddaschelt.
Yes.
Councilmember Alverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Mananza.
Yes.
Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes, thank you for your work on this and keeping us up to date along the way, too. Okay, our next item is item 10.1, the Fiscal Year 2020-2021 Second Quarter Financial Report.
Good evening again. Dennis Kaufman, Assistant City Manager and CFO. Tonight, I'll present a brief update on the city's budget status through December 31st, including information from the second quarter report that is attached to your council communication. First, I want to share a few highlights from the second quarter report that is attached to your council communication. Sales tax revenue in the general fund continues to exceed expectations and our budget estimates. You'll recall when we developed the current year budget, we reduced general fund tax revenues in the current year by about $14 million due to the pandemic, including nearly $9 million, or 15% for the Bradley Burn sales tax, which is the largest revenue source in the general fund. Our latest projections show this revenue source exceeding the budget estimate by about $6 million, reflecting only a 5% reduction from the pre-pandemic estimate instead of the 15% reduction that we built into the budget. I'll provide more information about this and other information about sales tax in just a minute. But first, I want to provide a brief update also on the city departments. Although most general fund departments are spending in line with their budget or under budget due to some of our spending controls, a few departments are expected to end the year under budget on revenue collections due to the pandemic, including Parks, Recreation and Libraries because of their programs being closed, and the City Clerk's Passport Center. The Police and Fire Department are incurring additional overtime this year due to COVID-19, as well as putting on a fire academy and sending strike teams to fight wildfires. The Police Department expects to cover its additional overtime with other budget savings this year, while the Fire Department will be coming back to council in June with a budget adjustment to recognize the reimbursement revenue that they earn and the additional overtime associated with those strike team efforts. The second quarter report also provides information on each of the city's enterprise funds, including the Youth Development Fund, which you received an update about at your last council meeting. I'll just highlight that halfway through the fiscal year, the electric utility and the water utility are both seeing higher-than-estimated revenues as our residential customers are still using more electricity and water while they're working from home and schooling at home. All of the enterprise funds expect to end the fiscal year under their expenditure budgets, which is good news. And for the three development fee funds that we highlight in the quarterly report, the fire facilities fee, the public facilities fee, and the Strategic Improvement Fund, staff reduced the revenue estimates for the current year based on the anticipated impacts of COVID-19 on development. However, development activity, as you've likely heard in the city, has been much stronger than anticipated, and revenues in these funds have almost exceeded the annual budget estimates through the month of December. Staff will provide updates on all of these funds in the next quarterly report. On the following few slides, I'll cover these four topics. The general fund, current year, year-end projection, some sales tax information by geographical area that we update each quarter, our new quarterly sales tax summary report that was also included with your quarterly report, and our budget development schedule. So first, I want to provide an early projection of the anticipated year-end general fund surplus based on our latest estimates of the tax revenue and the department activity. In addition to the projected $6 million of Bradley Burn sales tax in excess of budget, the latest projections indicate that Measure B, sales tax revenue, is also about $2 million in excess of budget by the end of the fiscal year, and property tax revenue is expected to exceed the budget estimate by about $2 million. The department revenues I mentioned earlier, including Parks, Recreation and Libraries, the Passport Center, and some other revenues are estimated to end the year about $4 to $5 million below budget. And general fund departments are estimated to end the year under budget with salary savings and savings in their materials, services, and supplies, leading to a net projected surplus of about $7 to $10 million, which is about 4 to 6% of the general fund total budget. Of course, the economic impacts of the pandemic are still generating an unusual amount of uncertainty for us and our tax consultants, and so these estimates are subject to change as time passes. This next slide shows a graph that we update regularly to show four years of sales tax trend data for the city's four major sales tax generators. You can see the typical seasonal trends in the data, and you can see the effects of the pandemic in the four quarterly data points for 2020 at the right side of the graph. The Roseville Auto Mall at the top has rebounded from the downturn, while the Galleria, the Fountains, and the Creekside Mall have recovered to some extent, but were still below their pre-pandemic levels through the last quarter of 2020. So attached to the second quarter budget report is a new quarterly sales tax summary report provided by our sales tax consulting firm. Most sales tax information at the individual business level is confidential. This report provides information at a higher level without disclosing any confidential information. The report includes the city's top 25 Bradley Burn sales tax remitters in alphabetical order, and it provides a couple of tables and graphs along with economic highlights for the quarter. This table in the report presents data for the fourth quarter of 2020 compared to the prior year and the full fiscal year, or excuse me, the full calendar year of 2020 compared to 2019. And it compares Roseville's results to the countywide results and the statewide results, as well as to the Sacramento region. Roseville sales tax receipts increased by 4.1% during that October-through-December quarter of 2020 compared to the same quarter of 2019. But you can see for the calendar year 2020, compared to calendar year 2019, Roseville's sales tax receipts were down 3.8%. As a reminder, that Placer Countywide Pool, the second row, reflects significant increases because that's where most of the online sales tax revenue is collected and then distributed to the members of the county pool. And you'll see that category on another slide that I have. This table reports really that the pandemic led to a general decline in our brick and mortar retail last year and a significant increase in online retail sales that's reflected there in the countywide pool. All right, so this next graph that's included in the report shows the annualized percentage change in sales tax cash receipts distributed to the city. At first glance, it looks like a very strange graph until you dig into the details. The dip in 2018 on the left and the spike in 2019 in the middle reflect that disruption that was caused by the change in the software program used by the state. And so I'm looking forward to that data moving off the chart in future years. But the right-hand side of this graph shows the decline in the first half of 2020 due to the pandemic, then the partial recovery in the third quarter, and then the slowdown again in the fourth quarter due to the regional stay-at-home orders that went into effect in December. The next slide shows a table of sales tax revenue growth data by business category for the fourth quarter of 2020 compared to that same quarter in 2019 and for the year 2020 compared to calendar year 2019. And this data, you can see, reflects reductions in retail and food products, which is largely the restaurants. And it shows positive growth in auto sales, especially in the fourth quarter, and in construction. The bottom row again reflects the countywide pool activity, which has captured that growth of online retail sales during the pandemic. This last graph displays the change in per capita sales tax over time, and it's an interesting combination of data elements, and it requires a little bit of explanation. The data has been adjusted for inflation, so revenue growth over time, simply due to inflation, has been removed. The sales tax revenue is divided by the city's population to get the per capita amounts by business category. You can see the pandemic impacts between the last two bars, with the decline in general retail and the increase in that bottom layer for the county pool, which reflects that online sales increase. Although the city's sales tax revenue trend is generally positive growth in total sales tax revenue for our general fund, this graph depicts declining per capita sales tax because population growth in the city has exceeded that inflation-adjusted sales tax revenue growth. Seems a little counterintuitive, but it makes sense when you consider that Roseville is a sales tax importer with our regional mall and our auto mall. The city is experiencing consistent growth in population at a rate that exceeds the growth in taxable sales adjusted for inflation. I've spent a lot of time with staff and with our consultant looking at this graph because I know it tells an interesting story, but it's not very intuitive, and so I wanted to explain it a little bit. And it'll be interesting to see how this graph changes next year as the economy continues to recover from the pandemic and the population of Roseville continues to increase. So I'd like to conclude with our upcoming budget development schedule. Tonight, you'll hear a presentation about the proposed Capital Improvement Program budget for next fiscal year. On May 5th, you'll receive presentations from Roseville Electric and the Environmental Utilities Department about their proposed budgets. On May 19th, staff will release the proposed budget for next fiscal year. On June 1st, the city council will conduct budget hearings. And then on June 16th, city council is scheduled to adopt the budget for the fiscal year that starts on July 1st. Finally, staff will provide the next quarterly budget report for the current fiscal year to the city council in July. So thank you, and with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Does the council have any questions of Dennis?
No questions.
Okay. Lot of information in there. I'll open it up to public comment, in case there's anyone tonight with us who wants to address this item, or if we have anyone who wants to call in. The phone number to make a public comment is 916-774-5353. We don't have anyone calling in on this item. So I'll close public comment. The council, you want another question, you have a question?
Comment.
Go ahead.
I just want to mention that, you know, the way Roseville's set up with our, a lot of development happening in our city compared to many cities, that it's a thank goodness item, I think. You know, the many, many councils before us planned this auto mall, and even the Galleria, which I know has dips, but that's such a major thing. And just watching the construction numbers and seeing that that was a big saving thing for our city, and it's a lot of revenue we weren't expecting. I'm just appreciative of the decisions made long before we were in these seats. I think it's showing right now it's helping us because this definitely is a very tough time, and I know a lot of cities aren't near the shape we're in right now.
Agreed. Okay, this is information only, so we won't be taking any action on this. Thank you, thank you for that. Okay, we have item 10.2 next, the Capital Improvement Projects Preview for Fiscal Year 2021-2022. We have Jason Sheikowski with us, Public Works.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Bernuscony and members of the council. My name is Jason Sheikowski, and I'm your Public Works Director. It's my pleasure to present to you tonight some of the key capital improvement projects that we as a city plan to pursue in fiscal year 2022. The combined value of the CIPs in this presentation, including projects budgeted in previous years, those being budgeted in fiscal year 2022, and those currently in the planning phases where construction will be budgeted in future years, totals $262 million. First up is Roseville Electric with $18.7 million in CIP projects, split into four categories: distribution system improvements, connecting new customer services, upgrading our meter infrastructure, and our power plants. Roseville is a growing community, and we continue to invest in our infrastructure to ensure system reliability. Two of the most significant distribution system improvements are the replacement of our industrial substation Switchgear Number One, as the existing equipment has reached the end of its useful life, and the expansion of our existing Pleasant Grove Two substation to accommodate new growth. Roseville Electric expects to install $6.3 million of new developer-funded electric system infrastructure in fiscal year 22. The infrastructure includes underground cables, vaults, panels, switches, and transformers to connect to new customer services. At the Roseville Energy Park and Roseville Power Plant Two, the fiscal year 22 capital plan was developed to extend equipment life, improve efficiency, and expand flexibility. Significant investments in this plan include the early design of an electric boiler addition, life extension of turbine control systems, upgrades to critical equipment, and integrating new technologies to improve reliability and plant startup performance. The meter upgrade project is currently focused on integration development with our third-party vendors and comprehensive user acceptance testing. Upon completion, Roseville Utilities expect to deploy the meters in a small pilot area in the community to offer real-world understanding of the installation, communication, and systems integration process. Full meter deployment for both utilities will commence upon successful completion of the 12-month pilot project, program. Next are some of the CIPs for the Environmental Utilities Department, totaling just over $123 million. The Westside Tanks and Pump Station Project will provide 12 million gallons of additional water storage and distribution facilities to support the increased water demand resulting from current and projected growth in the western portion of the city. The facility is located in West Roseville, immediately south of the Pleasant Grove wastewater treatment plant. The project components include a pump station with backup power, two 6-million-gallon storage tanks, the right image. Those tanks will be approximately 40 feet tall and 180 feet in diameter, an area for future water operations, maintenance, and crew building, and space for an additional 6-million-gallon tank in the future. Construction began in June of 2020 and is expected to be completed in the summer of '22. The construction cost is $23.5 million and is funded from the Water Construction Fund. The Downtown Water Maines Replacement Project addresses some challenges with aging 60-year-old water distribution infrastructure in the older areas of downtown Roseville. This is a multi-year CIP program to upgrade the water distribution system to improve flow capacity and address reoccurring maintenance issues in this area of the city. The Hillcrest neighborhood is the first year's project area, that area shown on the map here, with construction starting later this spring. The Hillcrest project will include constructing new water mains, service lines, valves, and fire hydrants. The project is being coordinated with the planned Public Works roadway resurfacing project scheduled to begin once the waterline work is completed. The Hillcrest Water Maines Project has a budget of $9 million and is funded by the Water Rehabilitation Fund. The Aquifer Storage and Recovery Program, or ASR program, will expand Roseville's aquifer storage and recovery infrastructure to create increased water reliability using the groundwater basin. These wells are unique as they provide water supply to meet demands through groundwater extraction, but can also be used to recharge groundwater basin in years where there is excess surface water supply. Currently, the city has six ASR production wells. This CIP program's goal is to add six additional ASR wells over the next six years. These six additional wells will be capable of providing up to 16.6 million gallons per day of potable water. day of potable water. As of March of 2021, Environmental Utilities has drilled eight exploratory boreings and constructed six monitoring wells throughout the city. These boreings and monitoring wells provide scientific information on the water quality and hydrogeologic data to provide pre-design information for construction of the six new ASR wells. It is anticipated that the first two new ASR wells will be constructed in the summer of 2022. The estimated project cost for the first two ASR wells is $10 million and is funded from the Water Construction Fund. The Pleasant Grove Wastewater Treatment Plant Expansion Project will increase the treatment capacity of the existing plant from 9.5 to 12 million gallons per day, which will accommodate projected growth in the region through 2035. The project will also help reduce odors at the plant, allow for alternative solids disposal options, and produce digester gas for the soon-to-be-constructed energy recovery project discussed on the next slide. The project components from left to right in the photos above include primary clarifiers with odor control and an electrical building, two anaerobic digesters with a control building, and a solids thickening building. Construction began in January of 2020 and is expected to be completed in the summer of 2022. The upper and lower photos show the construction progress that has occurred over the last year. The construction cost is $54.4 million and is funded by the South Placer Wastewater Authority CIP program. The Pleasant Grove Wastewater Treatment Plant Energy Recovery Project will add energy recovery facilities that will beneficially use the digester gas produced by the previously mentioned expansion project. This project will generate compressed natural gas to fuel the city's solid waste fleet, produce renewable energy to help offset a portion of the treatment plant's power needs, and allow for collection of fats, oils, and grease produced at local restaurants and businesses to help produce additional power and compressed natural gas. Construction began in January of 2020 and will be completed in 2022 concurrently with the expansion project. The photos above show the construction progress that has occurred over the last year. The construction cost is approximately $23 million and is funded by the South Placer Wastewater Authority CIP program and $7 million in grant and loan forgiveness funds. Maintenance and rehabilitation of the city sewer collection system is an ongoing effort for the Environmental Utilities Department. During fiscal year 21, the department utilized a new ultraviolet light cured-in-place rehabilitation method on selected sewer collection system pipes. This technology worked well and will be used again in fiscal year 22 to rehabilitate 2.5 miles of deteriorating sewer pipes and over 300 laterals extending their useful life. The project is anticipated to be constructed this summer and fall at a cost of approximately $3.4 million funded by the Wastewater Rehabilitation Fund. Next are the $815,000 in Technology CIP projects for fiscal year 22 that will further citywide initiatives in support of council goals. These projects are funded through both general fund and enterprise funds. First, we have the new $100,000 Job Applicant Tracking System, which will increase efficiencies when evaluating and hiring new City of Roseville employees. Next is a $100,000 Human Resources Performance Management System project that will evaluate, select, and implement a new employee performance management system. The new system will improve a supervisor's ability to evaluate and coach their staff in order to help them reach their highest level of performance. The $100,000 Security Enhancements Project will augment the citywide cyber and information security systems, including the addition, update, and replacement of cybersecurity equipment that can no longer be serviced or that has reached its end of useful life. And the $515,000 Virtual Machine Server Infrastructure Replacement Project will replace the aging virtual servers used to run many of our major enterprise-wide software platforms. Next are CIPs for the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Department totaling more than $17 million. These park projects are broken up into three major categories. The first group are parks that are anticipated to be under construction this fiscal year. These include the $1.1 million Four Corners Park, formerly W50C, which is a 1.2-acre neighborhood park located on Garland at Telluride in West Roseville. Also included are three turnkey developer-built parks: the $1.1 million F94 Pocket Park, which is a one-acre site located north of North Hayden in the Fittament Farm area of West Roseville; the $830,000 North Hayden Park, formerly F101, a one-acre pocket park located just south of North Hayden Parkway in the Fittament Farm area of West Roseville; and the $1 million CO62 Park, 2.3-acre linear park located on Terra Wood and Campus Parkway in Campus Oaks. Here's the Four Corners Park layout from the approved master plan. The 1.2-acre park includes a children's play and swing area, a half-court for basketball, two bocce ball courts, a shaded picnic area, and a tricycle track. Here is the master plan layout for the one-acre North Hayden Park, F101. There is a central turf area for informal play and two bocce ball courts with shared picnic areas on both sides of the courts. And here is the approved master plan layout for the F94 Pocket Park. This one-acre park will construct a children's play area and swing area, an interactive climbing area with concrete spheres, a shaded picnic area, and turf. The second major category are parks that are anticipated to be under design in fiscal year 22. There are seven. First, there are three school parks being planned this year: the $3 million WB50 in Westbrook, the $2 million F51 in Fittament Farm next to the recently opened Riego Creek Elementary School, and the $2.5 million JM50 in Sierra Vista. Next, the $1.1 million W50D Neighborhood Park located in West Roseville will be under design with construction planned for 2022. Also, the $3.5 million Citywide Park in Campus Oaks will continue design and will be built turnkey by the developer once the plans are approved. And there is the $1.5 million first phase of a park site at Gibson Drive, which is currently under design review. Lastly, planning and design will launch this fiscal year on the Regional Soccer Complex located in West Roseville off of Westbrook Boulevard. Here is the Gibson Park layout from the master plan. Phase 1 is under design review and will likely include at least six pickleball courts. The last parks project category is major rehabilitation projects. For fiscal year 22, this rehabilitation includes the $1.6 million Roseville Aquatics Complex Slide and Play Pool, the $478,000 Royer School Age Play Structure, and the $170,000 Stevenson Park Play Structure. Last up are the CIPs for the Public Works Department totaling $103 million. The $4.5 million State Gas Tax-funded Phase 1 of Sun City Road Rehabilitation Project, shown on the map above, will begin this summer with the other two phases rehabilitating the rest of Sun City's pavement over the next three to four years. Currently, the Phase 1 pedestrian ramps are being updated to current ADA standards per federal requirements, the need for which add another $2.5 million to the total cost of rehabilitation in the Sun City area. In addition, street cracks are currently being filled in anticipation of this summer's road rehabilitation work. In addition to the Sun City resurfacing highlighted at the top left of this map, we anticipate a $2 million residential resurfacing project that will repair and seal streets primarily within the Hillcrest Neighborhood after completion of the previously mentioned water rehabilitation project in that area. The Hillcrest Neighborhood is the area with all of the blue towards the center of the map. Funding for Hillcrest resurfacing comes from state gas tax and the recently approved SB1 gas tax passed into law in 2017. Also, construction has begun on the $7 million federally-funded arterial resurfacing project, which are all the roads in blue outside of the Sun City and Hillcrest Neighborhood on this map. Work on the arterial resurfacing project will continue through the summer. Approved earlier tonight were the plans for the Bridge Preventative Maintenance Project. Staff will now be seeking bids to rehabilitate and repair 16 bridges around the city that were previously identified by Caltrans to be in need of preventative maintenance treatments. The $2 million project is funded by Highway Bridge Program Funds and is anticipated to be completed this summer. Phase 1 of the Washington Andorra Project was recently put out to bid, and staff will be bringing a request for award to the May 5 council meeting. Construction will begin shortly after award. The $6 million project will construct a continuous bike trail from All America City Boulevard to Pleasant Grove Boulevard along Washington. It will also widen Washington between Sawtelle and Caseburg to four lanes, install a new traffic signal at Caseburg, and widen northbound Washington from just south of Diamond Oaks to Pleasant Grove. The project is funded with a mix of active transportation and congestion mitigation air quality grant funds, developer-paid traffic mitigation fees, and local transportation The much-anticipated Washington Boulevard at All America City Roundabout Project is scheduled to begin construction this summer as well. The project will meet multiple needs in the area. It provides a controlled intersection to help the expected increase in traffic from the grounds to safely exit All America City Boulevard. It provides for the safe crossing of pedestrians between the east and west side of Washington. It provides a connection for the Woodbridge Elementary School and surrounding neighborhood to the new multi-use trail being constructed by the Andorra Project, and it provides for the traffic calming of vehicles entering the Old Town area from the higher-speed Washington Boulevard arterial north of the project. As the entrance to the Old Town area of Roseville, the project includes landscaping and a roundabout design featuring feature paying homage to Roseville's tie to the railroad. The estimated cost is $4 million, and it's primarily being funded through federal grants with some Transportation Development Act money for design and to meet the 11% federal-local matching requirement. Later this fall, the Roseville Parkway Extension Project will begin construction. This project will provide for a sixth connection of east and west Roseville over the railroad tracks that bisect our city. Having another crossing of the tracks should measurably reduce traffic volumes on Pleasant Grove and Blue Oaks and will likely have a positive effect on the other crossings as well. This project is not only designed to provide an aesthetically pleasing vehicle crossing over the railroad tracks, it will provide the first family-friendly multi-use trail crossing of the railroad in Roseville. Another such crossing is planned along Foothills Boulevard over the tracks with the future Dry Creek-Greenway West multi-use trail project, which will run from Riverside Avenue to Cook-Riola Road in the county. The estimated cost is $22 million and is being funded through developer-paid traffic mitigation fees. Staff across multiple departments are coordinating with Public Works to facilitate the $3.5 million zero-emission bus charging station project at the city's corporation yard. This project will design and construct the first phase of the ultimate 25 battery electric bus charging station facility so that Roseville Transit can charge the five commuter and five South Placer Express battery electric buses, soon to be on order, and have the capacity to charge the additional battery electric buses expected to follow in the coming years. The project will also include the infrastructure for the future charging needs of the city's fleet of sedans and pickup trucks as they continue to be converted to plug in electric vehicles. Design is currently underway with construction anticipated to begin this fall. Staff is also preparing several key projects for construction in the near future. Design continues on the Dry Creek-Greenway Phase 1 Project, which will construct a bike trail from Riverside Darling to Rocky Ridge Drive along Linda and Dry Creeks. This $17 million project requires extensive environmental permitting, sensitive design considerations, and dozens of property acquisitions and negotiations, but should be ready to construct next summer. Design recently began on the Roseville Parkway Widening Project. This project will relieve daily congestion by widening Roseville Parkway in the vicinity of Creekside Center, the fountains, and the Galleria Mall from three lanes to four lanes in each direction. The widening will occur between Creekside Ridge Drive and Gibson Drive. The project will also construct a third westbound left-turn lane on Pleasant Grove for vehicles traveling from Highway 65, turning left towards the regional shopping destinations. The estimated cost is $8 million and is primarily funded with North Central CFD funding along with a smaller share of TMF. Construction could start as early as 2023. Staff is preparing to release a request for proposals this summer to design the Pleasant Grove Widening Project. This project will relieve daily commute congestion by widening Pleasant Grove from two lanes in each direction to three lanes in each direction, from east of Foothills Boulevard to just west of Wood Creek Oaks Boulevard. The estimated cost is currently $7 million, is being funded through developer-paid traffic mitigation fees, and construction could occur as early as 2023. Staff also plans to release a request for proposals this summer to design the new Fire Station #8, located at the southeast corner of Wood Creek Oaks in Painted Desert. The estimated project cost is $8 million and could be under construction as early as Design of the $2 million Mahaney Multi-Use Trail Project is anticipated to begin this fall. The project will connect multi-use trails from Wood Creek Oaks to Fittament and junction to Pleasant Grove in the open space around Wood Creek High School, the Aquatic Center, and Mahaney Park. Construction could begin as early as 2023. Also scheduled to begin design later this year is the Vernon Street and Folsom Road Roundabout Project. This project will provide improved pedestrian access on the eastern end of Vernon Street, encourage traffic calming for vehicles entering the downtown area, and enhance the aesthetics of the gateway into downtown Roseville. The current estimated cost is $4 million, and funding is expected to come from federal grant money, Transportation Development Act funds, and state gas tax. Construction could begin by late 2023. And our last CIP for you this evening is the 1/2 mile Miners Ravine Drive to Orviedo Drive Bike Trail Connection. Pending council approval of design funding later this year, staff could begin developing plans in the spring of 2022 with construction as early as 2024, pending identification of sufficient construction funding. The preliminary cost estimate for the entire project is $2 million. That concludes the CIP presentation, and staff from the various CIP departments are available to answer your questions.
Thank you so much, Jason. Does the council have any questions of Mr. Shikowski?
Some pretty aggressive goals. Good to see all this stuff happening.
That's member Alvin.
Department's definitely not going to be bored next several years. I was just curious where the two ASR wells that are going to start next year, where are those located, do you know, off the top of your head? Sorry, didn't mean to ask a tough one there.
In answer to your question, last I checked, it actually hasn't been determined. We have six sites, and so they're looking at production capacity, a lot of different collateral issues associated with each well. I don't know, but I'd be very happy to send something along once that's determined. Six possible sites, the two best ones we're going to go with first.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Haldashaw, any questions? Two things come to mind. The, first off, it's, I don't know how you determine what makes the list and what doesn't, because everything that's on here, you could probably think of that many more projects that we like to fit on there. So my question really is just regarding the, and all of them are highly anticipated, but the one on Roseville Parkway Extension, there is dirt that's moving along on industrial, and is that prep work for, it seems like it's south of Roseville Parkway, but, so it doesn't, it's not close to it, but I would imagine, I don't know what that is. That's not prep work for, is it?
Yeah, no, I'm not sure what that is either, but that's not for our extension project. We are in consultation with several developers who need to get rid of some dirt, and we need obviously some dirt for the approaches, so we're working with several developers in the area to make that happen.
Okay, okay, that's all I have for tonight. If we're, no other questions, I'll open it up to public comment, and if there's anyone tonight who would like to address this item, they can come to the podium, or they can call in. The phone number is 916-774-5353. And it doesn't look like there's anyone here in the chambers that would like to discuss this item. No one has called in on this item, so I will close public comment, and this is also for information only. No actions required from us. Thank you so much for all of that information.
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll move on to our public hearings, the first one this evening, 11.1 Density Bonus Ordinance Update.
Good evening, council members. Mike Isom, your Development Services Director. I'd like to provide a little bit of context for the next three items on your agenda. As you know, Lauren Hawker and her team have been working diligently to complete the housing element update in advance of the state statutory deadline. They've identified some changes that are necessary to make sure that the municipal code is in compliance with state law, and we're being proactive in bringing those to you now before the housing element goes through its formal review with the state, just so we eliminate some of that back and forth. Lauren's going to present the density bonus item. This really is just a reflection of changes in state law at the legislative level that, for the most part, have increased the maximum size of bonus that's allowed and has added some new incentives associated with the density bonus program. Gina McCall is going to present new objective design standards that would essentially create a streamlined ministerial process for approval of affordable housing projects. This is important because if we don't have, again, this is to be in compliance with state law, if we don't have this program in place, we cannot take credit for vacant sites that were identified in the previous housing element to meet our RENA goal, and as we've communicated early and often, we have a deficit in our lower-income categories. Without approving these objective design standards, that deficit would be 1,000 or more units higher, so it's important that we get that approved. Sean Morales, coincidentally, his first presentation to the council, will outline changes that- changes that further restrict, unfortunately, our ability as a local government to regulate accessory dwelling units. So he'll go into that and the changes to the associated fee policy. So with that, I'm going to let Lauren come up and talk about the density bonus. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I am here, as Mike says, to talk to you about updates to our density bonus ordinance. So the density bonus ordinance update, we can move on. Density bonus regulations are established in state law and have been around for many decades and are periodically updated. What they do is they permit additional units or density and other incentives for affordable housing projects. The city's ordinance was last updated in 2013, and so what this update does is take into account all the changes in law between then and now to bring our density bonus ordinance in alignment with state law, and that's all we're doing, is trying to make them consistent. So key updates that have occurred in the state law includes in the table of, for lower, very low, and moderate-income projects, where previously the maximum density bonus was 35% and now the maximum bonus is 50%. There is also now a brand-new provision for 100% affordable projects, which can get up to an 80% bonus. They also added a number of specialized housing types that are eligible for density bonuses, and that includes like disabled veteran housing and other specialized housing, student housing, that kind of thing. And then lastly, it amended the parking requirements, taking into account proximity to transit and various reductions in parking you could get depending on that proximity. So again, the city's ordinance is only being amended to be consistent with state law, and the state law is already in effect, so any request for a density bonus would already be assessed based on the existing law. So this is basically just for conformity and clarity in our own ordinances so that they're matched. So going over an example of how this can play out compared to the existing ordinance based on what was effective in 2013 and now, under the existing ordinance, if you had a 100-unit project that was trying to maximize density and incentives, because of course, that depends on how many units you're talking about and the levels of affordability, but if you had a 100-unit project and you were trying to maximize everything, under the existing ordinance based on 2013 law, you would need to have at least 45% affordable to maximize everything. That would give you a 35% bonus, so you'd go from 100 to 135 units. You could get a 60-space parking reduction, so you'd go from 160 to 100 parking spaces, and that's based on them all being one-bedroom units. And you would be eligible for up to three incentives. Now, the actual list of incentives hasn't changed, but the number of incentives you can get has changed, and incentives include things like reduced parking, reduced setbacks, reduced architectural standards, increased allowances and maximum height, that kind of thing. So under the updated ordinance, a 100% affordable project with 100 units could get an 80% bonus. If it was any less than 100% affordable, the maximum bonus would be 50%. But at 100%, you'd get an 80% bonus, so from 100 to 180 units, and you could, under a couple of different circumstances, have zero parking required. Now, for the standard type of project, that is lower-income housing, not sort of specialized housing, you would need to be within a half-mile of a major transit stop, which for us means the intermodal station, Amtrak station. So it's a very restricted geographical area. The other circumstances where you could have zero is for age-restricted affordable housing, so for folks 62-plus that are within half-mile of a transit line with at least eight routes a day. And then if it is supportive or specialized housing for people with mental health issues or disabilities, physical or mental disabilities, that kind of thing. So those are the circumstances where you would have zero parking spaces. The standard sort of affordable project we're going to see that's for lower income, you wouldn't see zero. It would be what we've talked about before, which is that half a unit or a half a parking space, depending on the number of bedrooms. But then you would also get up to four incentives instead of up to three. So that's sort of, again, maximizing it, those are the differences between then and now. So that concludes my presentation. Again, these are just to make our ordinance consistent with existing state law, and Planning Commission did unanimously recommend that the city council adopt the ordinance to amend Chapter 19.28 of Title 19 of the Roseville Municipal Code, which is our density bonus ordinance. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Lauren, thank you. Does the council have any questions of Lauren? Councilmember Alvar?
Oh, yes. Let's talk about parking for a moment. I realize this is not, this is totally out of our hands, but if you go from 160 to 260 units and you don't increase parking if you're within a half-mile, and I can think of a few projects that are within a half-mile of a transit station right now, that's going to be a disaster for the surrounding community. How do we deal with that stuff? That is crazy. It's absolutely crazy.
Yeah, and I, we know. This is something that we've been talking about as a city and an organization over the years, as these laws have changed and reduced these parking standards that, in certain contexts, that are highly urban, you know, these might make sense, but in lots of areas in Roseville, if you have zero parking, we know what happens. You create problems, not just for the surrounding community, but for the folks living there who may need a car to get to work but can't park it anywhere. So we do recognize that this is problematic for our community in a lot of different ways. It's just our hands are tied on this. The state law says what it says, and we don't really have an option.
I, this is something that, I mean, this has affected our community in multiple projects in a very negative way. This, I just see it exacerbating the problem. This is going to be a nightmare for council members and neighbors. I mean, this is a big, big deal. And you're exactly right, this is not New York City or San Francisco. We don't have subways and transit that people are used to using, you know, because parking's so expensive. This is Roseville. Are we trying to fight this at the state level? I mean, this is just horrible. And again, I know we don't have much of a choice because it's a rule we have to accept, but man, this is really painful.
Yeah, lots of local jurisdictions and League of Cities is often, takes an opposed stance on these bills for these reasons. You know, it's a statewide legislative change that doesn't take into account local or regional context. So we do take an opposed positions on, position on these things, but as we've all seen from the legislature in the past couple of years, there's just been this huge wave to sort of remove discretion. Certainly, if we have projects that are coming in as staff, if we have projects that are coming in that are looking to leverage these bonuses, we're going to be thinking in advance. You know, we can't deny them that bonus, we can't, you know, require them to provide parking, but we can start thinking about the likely effect on the community and whether or not there's anything else we could work on.
Maybe ways we can incentivize them to add more parking.
Sure.
Thank you. Sorry, I don't mean to whine about it, but.
No, I totally understand. I think we are all on the same page.
Just one more demonstration of losing local control.
Yeah.
And hopefully, the free market will help to determine what's desirable in our community, too. Any other comments, questions of councilmembers? Okay, I will open this up to public comment. If there's anyone here tonight that would like to address this item at the podium or call in to 916-774-5353. We have one caller so far we're ready for.
If you'd state your name, you may make your comments now.
Hello, my name's LaMills Garrett, and I am calling to encourage city council to consider steps to actually implementing policy that addresses the transportation opportunities and/or issues that come out of this. Whether we like it or not, what comes down from the state is one thing, however, whatever their policies are now impacting us. And a clear opportunity here is to rethink the current transportation practice that seems to be the route that we're going in Placer County with regards to taxing local citizens to add more lanes on I-80 and 65, and to rethink that in terms of how do we maximize transit of getting residents from high-population segments to other high-population segments within the city and connecting that to Sacramento so that we remove more cars from the highway. We can leverage light rail or the third rail, or buses, or scooters, or galley rides, et cetera. But to rethink how we're actually applying dollars or seeking dollars in the way of taxes now from the citizens to address transportation and to rethink that so that we're actually looking at how do we actually provide mass transit instead of more lanes on highways to address some of the potential issues that come from things like this. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more call.
If you'd state your name, you may make your comments now.
Yes, my name is Paul Griffin, and I just have a couple of comments. I want to reinforce something that Mr. Alvar said with the parking. It seems to me, I live in South Roseville, and it seems to me that that restriction on the, on the ability to construct these, these areas, it kind of limits where they would be able to be placed in town. And that further reinforced what LaMills was talking about, about the transportation opportunities. So I would just present that, you know, the transportation opportunities in the other portions of town be expanded in longer-range plans to where these are going to be constructed in the future to obtain the bonus. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last call, so we will, I'll close public comment. And does council have any other comments, questions? Okay.
The motion is to adopt the two findings of fact and introduce for first reading ordinance of the council of the city of Roseville, amending zoning ordinance Chapter 19.28 of Title 19 of the Roseville Municipal Code Residential Density Bonus. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Haddish.
Yes.
Councilmember Alvar.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes, thank you. Okay, well, we'll move on to item 11.2, Objective Design Standards. Hi, Gina.
Hi. Good evening, I'm Gina McCall, Associate Planner. Tonight, I'll be presenting on the proposed objective design standards and associated minor modifications to the zoning ordinance. The objective design standards were developed in response to Senate Bill 35 and Assembly Bill 2162, which requires cities to provide a streamlined review process for affordable housing projects. Qualified projects are multifamily residential developments that provide a minimum of 20% of the units as affordable for low-income. State law does allow cities to develop their own unique standards, so the proposed objective design standards provide qualified, qualitative, and qualifiable design and development standards for affordable housing projects that are unique to Roseville. As you heard from Mike, approval of these standards and the streamlined process is crucial because it allows the city to remain compliant with state law and meet our RENA requirement. Without approval, we could lose RENA credit for approximately 2,000 units and need to make up the deficit elsewhere. The objective design standards are a checklist developed from the community design guidelines. So for example, instead of the guideline that says building facade shall incorporate a variety of colors and materials, the objective standards state the project shall provide a minimum of three colors and materials on the facade. Projects electing to meet these standards are eligible for the streamlined over-the-counter permitting process and can proceed directly to the building permit and engineering permit review process, skipping the design review process. So before you tonight is a resolution to establish the objective design standards and an ordinance for minor modifications to the zoning ordinance to acknowledge these new standards and to allow the streamlined approval for qualified projects. Staff presented the objective design standards to the Planning Commission on March 25th. No public comments were received at this hearing. Planning Commission commented on their support for the proposed streamlined process and the benefits for affordable housing developments. The benefits are a significant cost savings in the tens of thousands of dollars in permit fees and significant time savings, as well as reduced sequoia risk. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. So in addition to the public commission, or Planning Commission review, the objective design standards were reviewed by internal city departments. The city also reached out to several affordable housing developers who have developed in Roseville. Any comments received were incorporated into the proposed guidelines. Early notification was also posted on the city's housing element update, and notification of the Planning Commission and City Council hearing was posted in the Roseville Tribune and on the city's website and on the Arcona website, and we did not receive any public comments as a result of this notification. So in conclusion, the Planning Commission is recommending that the city council take the following actions: adopt the resolution to establish the objective design standards and adopt the ordinance amending Title 19, the zoning ordinance, which relates to the proposed updates that acknowledge the establishment of these standards and the new streamlined process for eligible affording housing projects. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Does any of the councilmembers have questions of Gina?
Not for me. When I was reading through this, it mentioned, you know, so it can't go through our, it doesn't go through our design committee anymore, but it talked about it does have to be in visual compliance with surrounding buildings. And I know our city has kind of a color scheme that we recommend on buildings, and so if somebody comes in with a pink, yellow, and orange building, I mean, technically, if there's nothing around it, that could happen without us being able to stop it, or is there some wording in there that we can kind of, again, I don't know too many builders would want to do that, but if they really go wacko on us, any way to put our foot in the door on that?
We would need to add a guideline in there to define what colors and materials we want to see. We don't have anything in there right now as it is. For example, it doesn't say that you cannot have blue buildings or that sort of thing. So it really needs to be a quantifiable, you know, checkbox of standard. What we do have is requirements, for example, as I mentioned, that they need to provide a variety of colors and materials, and that's a minimum of three. So we're hoping that, you know, they, they choose ones that are appropriate to the area.
All right, thanks.
Vice Mayor Haddish.
But we have, in each of our specific plans, community design guidelines that go along with that, go along with the specific plans. So how does this interact with that?
So what we did is we looked at all those specific plans and what those design guidelines are, and we tried to incorporate them as, again, quantifiable standards. So they're very similar, and all of our specific plans, actually, the design guidelines are very similar to our community design guidelines. There are certain things that are unique to each specific plan, but that's really kind of the public street areas and, you know, if a park is to be developed, and that's not related to the design itself.
So if, you know, to follow up with Councilmember Alvar's comment, if somebody wanted to create the Miami district, you would have to, you'd have to amend the design guide, you wouldn't have to amend the community design guidelines? Would, wait, let me form it in a, make it in the form of a question. You would have to amend the community design guidelines in that specific plan to allow colors that were inconsistent with what was adopted?
So, in general, the answer is no. We have to, the, the quantified design standards have to be objective, quantified, and we can't, you know, one of the things we talked about is staff, when we looked at other examples of this around the state, is that you can't put so many requirements on it that it becomes impossible to, you know, use them to build something, right? So we really can't, there are circumstances like you're talking about where, yeah, somebody could come in and propose a building that's, you know, pink, yellow, and orange, or something like that. There's nothing in the standards that says you couldn't do that, except, of course, the market itself, right? You know, I would say that when we see these proposals come in, we've never seen anything quite like that. So we aren't, we aren't able to or trying to create sort of quantified standards that are going to account for all of those circumstances. These are, this is sort of the framework in which we're working. So that, that's how I would answer that, is that I don't think that's likely, but I understand the concern.
And these are, these objective design standards are only for affordable?
Yes, it's only a qualified affordable housing project that elects to use this process. process. Anybody looking for more sort of variation or flexibility could use the design review permit process. Is anybody else?
Okay, any other questions of staff? Okay, I will open it up to public comment. If there's anyone here tonight that would like to address this item, or anyone who would like to call in on this item, the number for public comment is 916-774-5353. We don't have anyone in the chambers and no one's on the phone. Okay. We'll close public comment. We'll have the clerk read the motion, please?
Ready for a motion?
Yes, thank you.
To adopt Resolution Number 21-152, approving the Objective Design Standards, and adopt the two findings of fact and introduce for first reading an ordinance of the council of the city of Roseville, amending sections 19.74.010 of Chapter 19.74, and section 19.95.030 of Chapter 19.95 of Title 19 of the Roseville Municipal Code Regarding Permit and Variance Requirements and Zoning Definitions. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Vice Mayor Haddaschelts?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Bernusconi?
Yes, thank you. Okay, welcome. Item 11.3 is our Accessory Dwelling Unit Ordinance and Fee Update Policy. Good evening, Sean.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. My name is Sean Morales. I'm an Assistant Planner, and I'm here tonight to present to you on the city's efforts to update the accessory dwelling unit ordinance and the associated accessory dwelling unit fee policy. A little background on the project, in 2018, there was state law that went into effect that promoted the construction of ADUs, and that prompted a full repeal and replacement of Chapter 19.60 of the municipal code, formerly known as the second unit ordinance, second dwelling unit ordinance, and now known as the...
I'm sorry, Mayor. Sean, can you, yeah, get a little closer there?
I need to raise...
Thank you.
Okay, so, oh, there's a little more pop on that. Once again, with the background, in 2018, we had to fully repeal and replace the ordinance due to state law, and additional state law went into effect in January of 2020, and further reducing the barriers to ADU construction. And now we are updating the ordinance to be in compliance with that state law. And here are a few of the key updates to the ordinance. ADUs and JADUs are now allowed on all residential properties, where they were formerly only allowed on properties developed with a single-family home. And there's now a statewide exemption ADU, or a minimum ADU that must be allowed to be constructed despite any other development standards. And those are up to 800 square feet with four-foot rear and side setbacks, and up to 16 feet tall. There are now provisions for JADUs, or junior accessory dwelling units, in the ordinance, which were not included in the ordinance previously. These are smaller ADUs that are within the home completely and up to 500 square feet. And state does require that there be use restrictions placed on the JADUs with a deed restriction on the home. And that deed restriction prohibits the short-term rentals in the JADU, as well as requiring that the owner live in either the primary unit or the accessory dwelling unit. Additionally, the number of ADU and JADUs permitted is being updated. There was formerly just one ADU permitted on the property. Now, one detached ADU is allowed, as well as a JADU, on single-family and duplex properties, and two detached ADUs are now allowed on multifamily properties. Staff has added a definition for permanent provisions in infrastructure, which is a state requirement of the minimum facilities that you must provide in order to be qualified as an ADU. And adding this more specific definition will help staff, as well as residents, know exactly what needs to be provided in order to meet these standards. And lastly, an update to the ADU fee policy is also included, based on state law as well, and most importantly, ADUs that are 750 square feet or smaller, the city can no longer charge development impact fees on those ADUs, and so the fees are reduced for homeowners on that. And once again, these are all updates in order to be consistent with state law, in addition to some other updates within the ordinance. And so in conclusion, staff recommends that the council adopt a resolution amending the accessory dwelling unit fee policy, and the Planning Commission recommended that the city council adopt an ordinance amending the Chapter 19.60 of the municipal code regarding accessory dwelling units. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Does the council have any questions of staff?
The county has a program where they're doing, they're encouraging ADU development for affordable housing, and some of their subsidizing, I don't know all the details on it. Do we have that kind of a program in the city, or does the county's program cover that for the city?
For accessory dwelling units?
For ADUs, yeah.
I'll let Lauren answer that.
First presentation, I thought I'd try to stump you right after that.
Yeah, so this, we are looking in the housing element at a program where we will be doing some outreach on ADUs, because we are taking credit for some amount of ADU production in our housing element. So we do have a program where we're going to be doing some outreach and putting some materials together, so folks know what the rules are and what their opportunities are.
To where, like, they can designate it as affordable for a certain time period? I think that's what the county's doing. If you designate it for a decade or whatever, they can help you with some of the building process or something.
We haven't proposed a program like that at this time. So right now, we're just looking at, because we, SACOG did an ADU affordability study for the region, and so that study showed that, you know, about half of ADUs are actually affordable, just what we call natural affordable, right? They just occur at affordable levels because of their size and location and all of that stuff. So about half of them are already affordable. So we haven't looked at a program like that at this time.
We'd get credit for those as affordable if we knew about them.
If we were able to get more than what shows, the ADUs we're getting credit for in our housing element are based on sort of a rubric that the state gave everyone, which is to look at the years 2013 to 2017, figure out how many ADUs you produced in that time period, and you can multiply it by five. So we would have to have something pretty aggressive to get more credit than that, and it wouldn't get us that many units, I'm thinking, so.
Okay, just trying to think about that affordability.
Absolutely.
Albert, I do believe with the county program, which nominally was created for mostly east Placer, that our residents are eligible for that, but we'll certainly confirm that and bring that back.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff? I have a quick question, and I know that this is language to align what the state is asking us to do, but from the city's perspective, have the number of ADUs or JADUs are doing what we had expected to do over the last couple of years in terms of people who are wanting to put these in their homes? Are we seeing any significant jump in numbers on, or was it about what we thought would be coming through?
You're asking if there's been an increase in those?
Well, I'm just curious, you know, like, this, so much talk about the ADUs and, you know, the affordable housing component and adding numbers, and I'm just curious, is it moving the needle at all? Are residents really interested in this? Are you seeing numbers jump on it? Jump up?
I'll add first, before Mike jumps up. As someone who does work at the front counter at times, I have seen an increase, for sure, based on the reduced barriers to ADUs, but it's not the floodgates opening with hundreds coming through.
Just to add on, if you ask, SACOG, it's the panacea to the affordable housing problem, but we're just not seeing the numbers that SACOG had projected or is projecting. And that's not to say it won't happen in the future, as housing prices continue to increase and the state continues to relax requirements. One of the big barriers was the payment of impact fees. That was a sizable cost to homeowners looking to build ADUs. Now that that barrier has been eliminated, at least, you know, to some degree, depending on the size, we may see more. But I don't think we're going to see the level that SACOG expects us to. Not moving the needle, is what Greg says.
Yep. Well, especially with the size of lots that are coming forward, too. You know, you think about where could that actually go?
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other comments, questions from staff?
I want to add a comment, since that was Sean's first presentation. I've been watching some emails. You've been dealing with some, it won't be a question, it's just a comment, but for some residents on the west side, have been pretty demanding in information. I just want to say I appreciate your professionalism and transparency and response to the community that are hounding you quite a bit, so thank you for that. I know the community appreciates that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. It's an active neighborhood, and I've been trying to do my best to respond and kind of engage with everyone.
Thank you. Nice job. Okay, we'll open it up, I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone tonight that would like to address the item at the podium, or anyone who would like to call in on this item? The number for public comment is 916-774-5353. And there are no calls on this this evening, and no one here tonight at the podium who would like to make a public comment on this item. So I'll close it, and ask our clerk to read a motion, please.
To adopt Resolution Number 21-146, amending the accessory dwelling units fee policy, and to adopt two findings of fact and introduce for first reading the ordinance of the council of the city of Roseville, amending zoning ordinance Chapter 19.60 of Title 19 of the Roseville Municipal Code Regarding Accessory Dwelling Units. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Haddaschelts?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Bernusconi?
Yes, thank you. Okay, we got through a lot this evening. Well, we have one last public comment. So if anyone would like to call in on any item that is not on the agenda, this is going to be your last chance to do so. The number to call in is 916-774-5353. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to make a comment on any item not on the agenda? We don't have anyone here tonight, and so far, the phone's not ringing. Okay, we'll close public comment. And we'll start with staff. Any comments, final comments this evening?
As you indicated, Mayor, we had a pretty full night. No further staff reports.
Okay, Councilmember Albert?
Some of the things that I was involved in the last couple of weeks is the Placer County Air Pushing Control District, nothing really major to report there, just a lot of budget items. Got to join the Arcona General Board, the Caseburg-Kingswood Neighborhood Association, West Park and Fittment Farm Neighborhood Associations. Placer County Economic Development Board met, and that was very eye-opening, listening about the different projects. We brought on the CEO of Sutter to be on our board, voted him in, and so that was really nice to have that perspective from the healthcare side. The highlight of my week was sitting in on a Zoom call with Daisy Troop 3182, and we got to talk about community service, and that was, that's the fun part of the job. That was a blast. And I want to mention, when we talked about the Wi-Fi loan for the water thing, it was really, this is, every time we have coffee with council or different community meetings, there's always somebody asking about water, and why do we keep building, and, you know, worried about water. And the answer is usually, you know, our developers aren't allowed to build unless they've secured a certain amount of water. Well, then we hear about droughts and things, and people get nervous and worried. And Roseville's doing very well as far as water goes. We still participate in, our mayor's signed on for us participating and trying to conserve and competing with other cities to do that, which is always a good thing. But this loan is helping us in the resiliency factor. This is our future water supply and making sure that we have adequate water supply. So that was really a big deal that we talked about in that loan. I just wanted to bring that up. I know, you know, we use a lot of technical terms up here, but what that is, is setting up our future, making sure we've got the technology and the different strategy for ensuring that we're all safe as far as water supply goes. So I'll have a share.
Yes, thank you. Vice Mayor Haddaschelts?
Tomorrow's Earth Day. SpaceX is leaving Earth tomorrow morning. You know, it's been a day, it's been a full day. So it started with Capitol Court Joint Powers Authority, which will be extending bus route from Sacramento to El Dorado. And then we have sites reservoir meeting, and the governor declared a drought in two counties, but in the process, in his press release, he said that the future is, that the future resiliency is in projects like sites reservoir. So that's all I have.
No updates this week.
Okay. I have just a few things. Since we were last here, most all of us were able to attend a swearing-in of our new police chief, who I saw earlier, and I think he had to leave, but like to congratulate Troy Berkstam officially. And you're right, on there's a national challenge on water conservation, and Roseville is number one so far in this national challenge. So if you haven't yet taken the pledge, go online. You can find on the city's website, and there's money up for grabs for a charity who wins. And then, and something else that's kind of fun is the Mayor's Cup, which is May 7. I think everyone is really excited to get outside, because it is sold out with golfers. But we'll be there all day if anybody wants to come by. It's definitely for a great cause. There's raffle items, and really good chance for us just to see one another outside of the chambers, too. So that's all I have for this evening. Like to note that we will adjourn, and I believe our next meeting is May 3. Is that date right?
May 5.
May 5.
Okay, so...
St. Patrick's Day, now we're meeting on Cinco de...
Yes. Dom, you'll bring tacos? Is that, okay, all right. So thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you everyone for their presentations. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye, okay. All right, thank you.